This conference will now be recorded.
It's all good, Mike. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:08 PM on September 3rd, 2025. Roll call.
Jason Daly.
Jason appears to be absent.
Nicole Hansen, here. John Hurt.
Here.
Mike Ferguson.
Here.
Mike Carson.
Mike Carson has had a business engagement.
Hannah Schai.
Here. We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. Lewis County Water Project, the paving, as you've seen, is is complete. HCon is still doing some cleanup around town. The ditches and whatnot, so just see a little bit of that, but hopefully the roads are nice and smooth for you again. McMurphy Park, the grant agreement with RCO has been approved. Drayton Archaeology will soon begin the cultural resources survey field work. We're not allowed to have any ground disturbance until that survey is complete, so that'll take a few months. Jail painting, thank you to the service family for getting this going and thank you to the volunteers that have helped so far. More help will be needed, so get ahold of the services if you're interested in helping on their next event. Water system receivership, I have a meeting scheduled with Lewis County next week to discuss the extension to our current agreement. Concert at McMurphy, Friends of Little Falls, we'll be holding their next concert on September 27th on Saturday night. I'll make sure to spread the word and all are welcome. And planning committee, there's a meeting next week on September 10th if anyone is interested in coming or listening in. It is broadcast live, just like the council meeting. Council reports, any members of the council have any reports tonight?
I do. So yesterday we had a visit from the State Historic Society. They were here to talk about America's 250th birthday, which happens next year. And she just came to share a little bit about what the state's doing. It's really a grassroots effort, it's not specifically funded, but they're asking organizations and cities to support the effort. And they've identified different themes, different days, different, I don't know, activities such as days of service. They're asking that maybe we do certain things during Independence Day, but really it's up to us as a community to decide what we want to do. Part of the conversation we had, though, that I think is really exciting is that they're going to be including pictures from this as part of the historic record. So if we decide to participate as part of the state historic record, so if we decide to participate and say send pictures of our Fourth of July party or things like that, it'll become part of the state historic record, which I think is really cool. Yeah, so they also have a number of opportunities for us to share moments that made us, which is an opportunity to kind of print and advertise some different events that have happened throughout history. We can pick a, Kristen, help me a little bit, we can pick a like local object or historic artifact to share that will be included in their records along with other cities. So I think it's a very exciting opportunity. They asked that we sign up to be an official partner. There's no cost to us. We'll get information on what's going on, access to the logo, marketing information, newsletters. I think it sounds like a really cool opportunity for us to have veteran events or, you know, just fun events for the community to commemorate. Is there anything that I'm missing? Because you were there too.
So when it comes to the artifacts, they suggested we can choose five artifacts and have the citizens vote on which one they thought that's represented us, I guess. So that would be a way to get people involved and then they wanted to turn it into a scavenger hunt. So it could be a way, here's our artifact, where can we find it later and get them to come to town and kind of explore a little bit.
Yeah. They're going to have a shared events calendar, so if we want to list our events, they'll have it up on their events calendar. We can include pictures to invite people to our city. So I think it's, I think it's a fun opportunity. So part of what we need to decide, and not necessarily today, is whether or not we want to become an official partner and sign up.
Sure. The bigger plan is I think we have the Fourth of July.
Well, it's up to us. I mean, nationally, nationally, there's a number of events. And there's a national committee that was formed in 2016. So apparently nationally, there's a lot of planning that has gone into this, but every state has its own committee and they're actually independent. So I think it's interesting.
We could add in on our Fourth of July celebration.
Yep. We had a representative from the Fourth of July committee here yesterday who was really excited. May Day Committee's already reached out to me and said that they might be interested in doing something. I think it seems fun. And so I'm happy to share more ideas. I don't know that we, you know, need to discuss them all today, but I think the question for us is, you know, if we want to participate. Mike Ferguson, can you hear me okay?
I can. I think it's a great idea.
So what would be the next steps if we wanted to sign on to this?
We just sign up to be an official partner, so I can go ahead and do that if that's okay with the council. Do we need to vote? I don't think we need to vote. I think we just give a nod, a thumbs up and.
Yeah, as long as everyone's in favor.
I'm in favor of it. Thank you, Nicole.
Absolutely.
There's your majority right there.
Perfect. We will do that and I will keep you guys updated.
Thank you. Thank you for spearheading that.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Any other council reports? Okay, moving on to agenda approval. I don't have any changes tonight.
A motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's meeting, September 3rd, 2025.
Motion, Mr. Ferguson, to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the city council's meeting minutes for August 20th, 2025.
A motion by Mr. Hurt to approve the minutes from August 20th. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll say.
Yes. Nicole got it. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Voucher approval.
No, you don't.
Go ahead. I make a motion that we accept the beginning of September 2025, forty-two thousand, six hundred dollars and thirty pennies.
We have a motion by Mr. Hurt to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hanson, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Special reports, Lewis County Sheriff's Department, Mr. Ruben did get ahold of me today and said he was unable to attend, but he will come to the next meeting and give his report then. I believe the only major issue he was going to report on for the month was a burglary at the mini storage. So they were following up on that. Any public comment tonight? Moving on to city business. Item number one, council to discuss the proposed 2026 budget process calendar. So for those of you that are seasoned council members, which there are one online tonight, this budget calendar should look very familiar for those of you that are new. There are many steps that we go through in the budget process, from public hearings to workshop nights to notices in the paper of various public hearings and all that. And so this is a full listing of everything that needs to happen between now and the end of the year. Obviously, the nights where there's public hearings are good for council members to be here. And they're all on regular nights. Does this schedule work for everybody or do we need to make modifications?
Are you able to put the schedule on the screen for me, Joe?
I might. Let me scroll further for you here. Oh, it's in there. There you go. Do you have any questions, Eric?
What is the public hearing? Like, what does that mean?
What is the public hearing? So there's a public, there's a public hearing on the budget itself where folks from the public can come and say, and at that time we'll have a draft budget. And they'll be able to look at that and be able to say, hey, you should spend more money on roads or less money on this or whatever, right? And they, and they give their opinion about what we should be spending money on. The other public hearing, I believe, is on the property tax levy. And so one of the things the council will need to decide is if the city needs to adjust its property tax levy rate. And there is a public hearing for that to listen to the public. And generally, if there's any public, they say they don't raise our taxes, generally.
Basically a town hall type of.
Yeah, so the public can, it's announced in the paper, they come here and it's just during the regular council meeting.
Got it. Perfect.
They'll come in, they'll just say taxes.
Are we bringing up the sewer again this year? Wasn't the feat up last year or tabled?
The sewer, a sewer increase?
Yeah.
No, we've, we raised the sewer rate.
Well, maybe it was the property taxes.
Property taxes, yeah. Sewer rate, we kind of need to raise it a little bit every year to keep up with inflation and whatnot and to keep the sewer fund solvent. The property tax has not been raised for a number of years, which also means the amount of money that the city gets is not, has not risen in a number of years either. So we're around seventy-eight or eighty thousand dollars a year we get in property tax and that number stays fixed for all eternity unless we raise it. Just because home values go up doesn't mean we get more money or anything like that. It's, it's a fixed number. That's the way it works. Yeah, the city council says we need eighty thousand dollars and we say, and then the number, it gets calculated out what, what the levy rate is and then that's what gets put on people's homes in an effort to get us eighty thousand dollars. So it always, and it gets adjusted every year to keep us at eighty thousand.
Remember that printout that you had last year?
Yeah.
So yes, and creating calendar works. That was your question.
Okay, yes. Yeah.
It's a percentage, it's a percentage of property rate increase every year, right, Joe? That's why we, we take, I motioned to bank the 1% increase.
So the city gets a 1% increase on our current rate every year, so.
We've had, well, historically, we've had the opportunity to increase it by 1%, but this year our governor allowed city municipalities to increase everyone's property taxes by 3% every year. So it's not a set amount based on, like, if everybody in, like, if, as we get more houses, every house is another, is a new contribution to our city tax income. What we've halted is the increase of the tax rate for each house. Or what that's, I mean, that's been my understanding. That's, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not sure about the 3% thing. I know that was being discussed. I hadn't heard that that actually passed.
Yeah.
And I don't know, and I don't know if that would go into effect this year or not. The other thing about, like, you know, if we got more houses, we would get more money. That's not, that's not correct. We could, we could add a thousand more houses to the city and we wouldn't get a dime more because we've set our tax, we've set our property tax levy at about eighty thousand dollars. So it's just that that eighty thousand dollars would get spread out over more houses, so everyone's rate would go down. So that's, that's the way that works.
So why would it be labeled as a percentage rate of increase when it, when it comes in front of us? If that's, I've never, that's the first time I've heard a thing about eighty thousand dollars. Like, that's.
Well, I use eighty thousand dollars because that's about what our levy is right now. And that's what it's been for a number of years. So the 1% a year isn't a 1% on your, on, on each home. It's, it's a 1% increase to our current levy rate. For instance, if our levy is eighty thousand dollars a year, we can raise it by 1%, which is eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred dollars.
To raise it. Yeah, so we're able, we would raise it by eight hundred dollars. But you get to, you get to bank that 1% if you don't actually use it. So right now the city has 12, 16%?
Yeah, it's up there. I know I.
Because we don't use it. And so we get that 1% every single year. And so, you know, if we were to, if we were to max out our, the amount that we could raise property taxes, it would generate the city an extra ten, twelve thousand dollars a year or something like that. So our levy rate would go from eighty to, for instance, ninety-two thousand dollars a year. And then that ninety-two thousand spread about, spread out over all of the citizens in this, in the city.
Yeah, that's, which would be amortized throughout all the households, the homeowners.
Right. Yeah, so if your house is three hundred thousand and someone else is two hundred, you're talking, two hundred thousand, your taxes would be slightly higher than theirs or a third higher, I guess.
Yeah. So we need a motion to approve this calendar? Is that where we're at?
I don't think we need a motion, but as long as everyone is in agreement that this works out, then we'll just do it.
I don't have anything scheduled for those days.
Yeah, it's all on regular council nights.
Yeah.
So. It can be too much.
All right. Except for the public, the notice of public hearing.
See, the notice of public hearing will be in the paper, so that's the, so I can believe, Kristen, that when it says notice of public hearing, that's the day you need to send it to the paper so that it's in the paper by the following Wednesday. So that, for instance, right here on the fifteenth, on the sixteenth, she'll send it to the paper this day. The paper goes out on Wednesday every week, so, so it would be published in the paper then. And then we need to wait two weeks to actually hold the hearing. That's how that works.
This is really just reminders for me to get it to the paper on time.
So the public hearing would actually, so that's the notice and we put it in the paper and then the hearing itself would be on the fifth, November fifth.
On the fifteenth, but there's not a notice of public in September.
Yeah, if you see on the top of the listing on the left-hand side, it says September twenty-fifth. You go way to the top.
Look at you, taking care of all my.
That's her, that's her.
Kristen, taking care of all of us.
She just didn't put a whole calendar on it, just to say September twenty-fifth. Any other discussion on the calendar? Okay, moving on to the fun thing that we were looking at. Item number two, council to consider ordinance 06225, bidding business license regulations and adding home occupations. So this is actually a two birds with one stone kind of thing. So the, the business license regulations, there were changes at the state level that every city had to adopt. And so, for instance, it was changing the two thousand dollar limit to four thousand dollars. And so we had to adopt it, and so that's built into this ordinance. It wasn't the city's choice, state's government. The other part is the home occupations. And that's a thing that the council's been talking about for a very long time, that allows people to operate a small business at their own property. And there's a number of things in the ordinance that have specific restrictions on that business. And so that would be starting at section. Let's see. Let's see if I can set that in here. Oh, it isn't here. So the first section is all just state requirement stuff. And the next section is the middle chapter.
It's section page eight.
There it is.
Three?
Eight.
Oh, eight.
So yeah, it gets into specifics about the location of the business, about it. Needing to be in the, in the building. Size, no more than 25% of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling may be used for the home occupation.
So I'm going to jump in and say, I really appreciate that we got this in advance. And I have read most of it, however, I do feel like I need a little bit of time to think about it. So I'm wondering how council feels about, you know, discussing it, but not yet voting.
I, a hundred percent. I, I did not, I did not get a chance to read through it as well all the way. So I, I did notice that it was on the agenda and I was really excited about it, but however, did not get a chance to read through it. So I would kind of motion that we kind of move that, just, you know, any kind of decisions to the next meeting.
That's not a problem. We do need to get at least the business license regulation approved by the end of the month. Is that correct, Kristen? So we do absolutely have another meeting to get to that. And so if there's any.
We can, so I would motion that we adopt the regulations that the state has handed down. Like, we, we do need to keep ourselves current with our regulations.
Yeah, the way it's built into this ordinance, I don't think we should separate it just yet. So I'd say just, you know, absolutely have a discussion about it right now and then we can, we'll have it on the agenda for next time. If there's things that we see right now in the discussion or that when you review it at home, definitely get your suggestions off to the, to city hall here so that we can get the ordinance updated with those.
I, I believe that vehicle, I believe the vehicle regulations, like, you know, that it's G or, or no, it's eight, item eight, and I'm not sure which section that is, but I, I think that needs to probably be in there. Because like, I mean, you, if someone's getting a, having a delivery like brought in or if maybe they make sal, like salves or something and they're sending out a bunch of boxes of their, their product, that would, that would regulate them from being able to do that because, you know, a standard box truck can weigh in around 12,000 to 15,000 pounds.
Wouldn't instead of removing it, we just change it a little bit, like increase the weight of revised the part that says no more than one vehicle, maybe we think about that. I don't know that I would want it removed, but I think the weight needs to be increased. I don't know.
Well, most of your 24-foot trucks, or box trucks are licensed for 26,000 pounds.
So I have a, I have a city business license and I have three of my commercial vehicles parked on my property. So, I mean, I read this and it kind of puts me in violation of that, right? I mean, I'm not trying to get this traffic license, but, I mean.
Well, Mike, you're, you're, you're not operating your business. Your business is not a home occupation business, though. It's not like you've got a storefront at your business.
Oh, that's a really good distinction because this is under the home occupation, so.
Yeah, because that was.
Well, actually, it would depend on the address of this business, which I don't think you should have to share.
Because I have three vehicles on my property for my business.
Right, but this would depend on each person's legal address for their business and I don't think we should ask anyone to share that, you know? So maybe, maybe this is one thing we need to think about a little bit. I hear you, mayor, that we need to get the changes to, Kristen, before. So Mike, are you suggesting that we remove the number of vehicles and increase the weight? Or are you requesting we remove the section altogether?
I mean, I, I don't know, like, I just, I, I understand the need for some regulation, but, I mean, limiting the amount of vehicles and, I, I don't know. We don't have a lot of people that have a lot of space to do a lot of different things like that anyway, so. We don't have any commercial space in our town for people to build businesses. I don't want, I don't want to be the one to thwart that. So it's a tough call for me. When I read that 10,000 pound thing, though, that's kind of very restrictive, not even kind of, it, it's extremely restrictive, so.
Okay. See if I can figure out a reason why.
Isn't there a difference of park it on the street and park it on your personal property?
Yeah, there you go. There you go, John. I like that.
We would have to change that to where, you know, if it, like, your equipment and my equipment is on our personal property.
Absolutely.
And yours is actually, yours is actually behind a fence. It's not blocking a right of way, you know, where, you know, there, there's people here that park lumber trucks or log trucks or whatever out on the road. We're, we're not blocking the right of way for anybody. It's on our private property. And we're not actually selling anything out of our house. Our work is always out in the field somewhere.
Right, but you're, you know, like, you're, I'm thinking about, you were talking about your barbecue sauce, you know? So say you decided to turn half your garage into this processing plant and now you're putting out 30 cases of barbecue sauce. Somebody's going to have to put it in a truck and take it somewhere. So I mean, that, now that becomes part of that business, right? I mean. Same with Mike and, and, you know, they, they put a box up all their crafts and truck them out of here and, you know, his truck weighs 12,000 pounds, 11,000 pounds, his trailer weighs like 20,000 pounds. So, I mean, we're going to tell, we're going to tell Mike he can't sell lavender and essential oils and homemade crafts? I don't, I don't know.
Well, I, I thought when we talked about this last year, right, you know, that helped Parsons out and a couple other people in town, was to have little cottages where they can open up, like maybe on the weekends or whatever, to have, you know, people are coming through with their bikes and motorcycles and coming into town for different events, that they would be able to sell stuff right out of their house. This, this is what, that was brought up, oh, a year and a half ago.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing, you know, but, I mean, it's, this is to be able to, you know, Mike rents a storefront in Castle Rock and, and pays sales taxes in Castle Rock. He could have a, he could have a store here at Parwell. You know, I'm just, I'm, Mike is not the reason for this to happen. He's just, what's that?
And then the taxes would come to Vaser.
Yeah, I'm just trying to use Mike, Mike as an example. That's all, that's all I'm doing, okay? Because he's, he's a good example. And, you know, then the taxes would stay here, so. And we don't have much sales tax being generated here in Vader, and so I'm all for that kind of stuff.
Well, I think almost everybody on council is a business member, so we're definitely, is a business owner. So we're definitely not trying to impede each other's businesses for sure. But I'm saying, like, I want you guys to know, like, me asking questions is about the bigger conversation. I definitely don't want to interfere with anyone's business, a hundred percent. Yeah.
All right, I think we've got some clarification on that. So if we, like, for instance, remove the weight limit and said that, you know, you need to keep any of the vehicles on your own property, I think that would kind of tend to regulate itself being. I think that would kind of tend to regulate itself being, you know, if you had a small property, obviously, you're not gonna have, you know, a sixty-foot trailer, trailer truck combination. But if you've got a larger property, then it would allow you to do it. So it kind of self-regulates based on how big your property is. If you have to maintain the vehicle on your property and not in the right of way.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Absolutely, yeah. I think that was a good point that John brought up, like whether it's on private property or city property.
Is Mr. Ferguson or Parsons, I'm sorry?
Is that what it was saying? I'm sorry, I haven't been able to read all of it, I've been driving. But, um, it's, so it's talking about, we're talking right now about ten thousand pounds being parked on the street?
The, what it's, what the ordinance, the draft ordinance says is that vehicles larger than ten thousand pounds gross weight shall not be operated out of the premises or parked on the property or adjacent streets.
And we all agree that's too low.
Also, no more than one vehicle used in the business may be parked on the premises or operated out of the premises.
And we all agree that's too low.
Yeah.
I have a good suggestion.
Okay, that sounds like if we adjust that to, we get rid of the restriction and then make it say that you just need to keep your most vehicles parked on the property and not on the adjacent streets or right of ways. I don't think we need to worry about the number of vehicles used in the business. Again, if they have to park on the property, it self-regulates. If you have a small property, you can only have two or three vehicles. If you've got a big property, well, then you can have more.
I think the people that don't have businesses have too many cars on their property.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to this next week or we just already?
No, no, we don't have to make a motion for it. We just, I'd say, well, that's fine.
I would agree with the amendment mentioned by the mayor.
Agreed.
What other sections has anyone seen so far that are questionable? Just looking through this.
Is there anything about, uh, like cosmetology or hair, hairstylist or anything like that?
Are you.
Childcare.
Are you anti, anti hairstylist?
No, I, I paid for my daughter to go to college to be a hairstylist.
Oh, I see. We have vested interest in your daughter's success so that she can eventually leave your property.
It can only be used for a single dwelling unit. The, no more than twenty-five percent.
Thing else looks okay, actually.
I did think there was about an accessory dwelling.
Yeah, it was, that's, so under the, it's part four of the residency. So you could have an ADU, um, that's part of that as well, part of the business. Seems okay.
Perfect.
I think the other, the most restrictions I was seeing were under number six, maintaining residential character. The home occupation shall be conducted in a manner which will not alter the normal residential character of the premises by exterior alteration of the property, expansion of parking, construction, creation of a separate entrance, the use of color materials, lighting, signs, other than on applicant's vehicle, exterior storage of materials, goods, or merchandise, or by the admission of sound, electric interference, vibration, dust, glare, heat, smoke, odors, or liquids. I know one of the things council talked about for a while was signage. And so, um, this is suggesting that you're not going to, um, put a sign on the, on the home, but would it allow like a sandwich board or something like that?
Well, when we're talking to a few people who are gonna have those cottage, they're having a, a map somewhere in the downtown area that's showing the different homes that were.
I, I would think that they could have, be able to have some unlit signage of some kind, you know?
Yes, unlit signage, I don't see an issue with. I see a huge issue with flashing neon signs.
So allowing unlit signage of a particular size, would we want a size limitation on this? Said signage, if someone's gonna put a sign on their garage door, for instance?
I think there should be a limit. I don't know what that is, but I do think there should be a limit to the size of the signs. There should be some standard requirement, something.
So, like, a, a modest US flag is three by five?
Yeah, I, I think three by five is a, is a acceptable size, but again, it's like, what, how big is your property? You know, yeah, it's, it would be obnoxious for someone to paint both of their front garage doors. You know, some ridiculous thing that would really draw away from the character of our town, but, I, you know.
Obviously, so obviously, this isn't just for me, but I don't know if Mike or any of you have driven by my property. I have my Parwell Farm sign on the side of my flatbed truck. Um, and it's, right now, it's parked in, uh, on the backside of my shop, so it can be seen by Tenth Street. Not intentionally, that's just, I haven't taken off of it from, taken it off from the movie in the meadow. But that's eight by three, right there, is, has that? Mike, you drive by it every day, is that like, oh my gosh?
What an eye, what an eyesore, what an eyesore, man. It's like, it's like eighty feet off the road or something.
Yeah, but the house for signage on the side of your vehicle, so that's completely fine.
So if you're the kind of person that has a ridiculous lar- ridiculously large trailer, um, you could have quite the sign on that.
Correct, and I think we immediately.
So we're, we're, we're looking at this, right?
Just be like on the, on the home property itself.
Mr. Mayor, but how many people would benefit from us going forward with this?
I mean, we don't know. I mean, there's at least four or five that have come forward that said that they're interested already.
And if we have cottage businesses and they register businesses and they become very successful and it helps our town. Like, when you become world famous, you're working your sauce.
You know, like, seven years ago, or whenever it was when we first talking about this, there was a gentleman that lived in town and he was all into the hot sauces and I was always making jokes about his home business idea and flashing hot sauce signs outside his house that he was gonna put up. And now here you are with your barbecue sauce, ready to eat more jokes.
I am, I am curious, guys, about this expansion of parking, construction, or creation of a separate entrance. Obviously, I understand why that's in there. However, it does feel like maybe if you are an artist and you wanna have a studio, are you gonna have a little tiny shed in the back of your space? And then you need to create some kind of, you know, entrance through the side of your property? Like, does that limit this? I don't, I don't, I don't think so, but I'm just gonna throw it out. I don't know if that limits any businesses, the expansion of parking, construction, or creation of separate entrance. I initially am not worried about it and, you know.
I think that.
Go ahead, Mr. Parsons.
I think that being able to make an extra parking area or a separate parking area, I know that would be nice, because, um, maybe it's away from the neighbors type of a thing. So, you know, they can pull into the alley and go in that way, or, um, or whatever, but I know that, um, it would keep, they should, if they are having people come to their house, there should be additional parking instead of on the street. That would affect more people than clearing off an extra area of your property for people to park on.
And most cities have a limit of the number of people you can have parked at your home at any given time for a business, and I don't know that I've seen that. So I would agree with Mr. Parsons that a separate parking area is okay with me, but we may wanna limit how many people can park there. The mayor.
Yeah, there is a section about number of people coming to your business to get talked about.
A limited lunch. Sorry, it's a lunch taken per day.
Yeah, because there is two per hour, um, and then there's an X meeting per day. Visitors, customers, and order list.
Yeah, but if you're, if you're having something, just say, right, it's, you're not gonna have this seven days a week, you know, from eight to five every day, you know? If you limit it to two persons an hour, that, that's insane, because if we're, if I open up on Saturday, you know, at ten o'clock, so my neighbors can sleep in, you know, and, and stay open until two or three o'clock.
Get the lunch rush for your sauce?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But of course, I think it'll be eight bottles.
Huh?
According to this, so you don't be able to sell eight bottles.
I'd rather give eight bottles.
Eight bottles, yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, so that, that, something like that would have to be changed, because.
I would rather not regulate the amount of visitors, but regulate the business hours.
Right.
That's what I would want to see.
And most of your retail stores like that stuff don't open up on the weekends. So, heck, you can't even go to J.C. Penney's until noon, you know?
It seems like we all have a lot to think about.
But just to throw it out there, don't think about it too much, because that's what happened seven years ago. Everybody got on the huge details of, of everything and, uh, and then it ended up just dying and not going anywhere.
That's what I was gonna ask, um, was, you know, so we adopt this ordinance, then how, how difficult and how time-consuming is it for us to make modifications to it in the future? And does that become costly for the city?
Well, it's just as easy as passing this and it's not costly. So you're right, it, it, it can get changed. And so, you know, if we, if we adopt this and we find out that there's a problem, if we miss something, we can always add it in later.
Well, I'd like to see the weight modifications made and, and then I think we could probably move forward with this at the next meeting.
Okay, definitely, everybody take a look at it and, and see if there's anything else that, you know, raises any red alarms for you and kind of, kind of think through a way a business operates and how it would fit into this and that if we're missing any obvious things that are going to cause issues for neighbors.
Okay.
So, Mr. What's that?
Mr. Parsons, can you hear me?
Yes.
If you were gonna have something, uh, at your house like that, would a Friday through Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, what days would you wanna operate like that? Because you're the only one of us that really has something like that.
I, I try not to do anything on Sunday.
Okay.
And my store in Castle Rock is open, um, from ten to three on Tuesday through, Tuesday through Friday, and then Sat- or ten to five, Tuesday through Friday, and then ten to three on Saturday.
So, if, if we adopted something where it was, uh, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, uh, out of a house front here, so we're not, my main, all the neighbors with all the, you know, cars coming in, cars going and stuff, you know, from like, like you said, from ten to three on Saturday and.
I think that Saturdays are, uh, Saturdays are, I don't know, because, um, some people wanna, you, you do minimal hours on Saturday, because people are home on Saturdays.
Right.
And so, why have your business going when everybody's in town? But it would be a, uh, so more during the week, I would think, because most people go to work and and that's it.
I would suggest.
Yeah, Monday, Monday through Saturday, nine to five, you know, that's, why would you?
Something like that. Think about when people are home, it's like, cause we got a lot of people that, we don't have sidewalks. We're going to go out walking our dogs, you know, kids riding bikes. Maybe we'd want, you know, to have the late afternoons or evenings be, you know, be closed by five or something. That way, the, the vehicles aren't coming in and out of the neighborhood.
Right.
People are trying to use.
The reason I was asking, because if you're having it one or two days a week, or even three, it's a little expensive for that, for them to have the insurance at their home, you know, get the licensing through the city and the state. So that all adds up, and is it worthwhile for them just for a couple days a week? I, I, I would, it should be, well, if the cottage wants to be open all week, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, and I know there's people that have talked to us about having, um, a, a massage studio, um, and.
That's, well, that's gonna be one person, that's three.
Yeah, and I get mine out.
That's gonna be one or two people.
Yeah, so, but, you know, to limit that just for the weekend probably wouldn't work for their business, so. Okay. All right. I think we've got some good ideas here. Definitely take a look at it. If there's anything else besides these, fire it back at us and I'll make sure to, uh, kind of take one-on-one polls from the council members, uh, to see what they think of the ideas in the meantime.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other discussion on this right now? Okay, um, it's the end of city business by my agenda. Any elected official comments?
Have we looked any further into an ordinance officer that I brought up last time?
Oh, like a code enforcement officer? Yeah, I've, I've been doing some research on that. I actually got ahold of the president of the Washington State Code Enforcement Association.
Oh, yeah.
And he sent me, it's got a big title, and he sent me a bunch of information that I need to look at about, um, private companies that offer that service. Um, so I'm still working on it.
Okay.
His name's John, by the way. Yes.
Good name, good name.
Any other elected official comments? Okay, meeting is scheduled six fifty-six P M. Okay, meeting is adjourned at 6:56 P. M.